Welcome to this week's Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting. This meeting is held in the Jackson County Courthouse Auditorium at 10 South Oakdale in Medford. This meeting is held every Wednesday morning at 9:30 as long as a quorum of two commissioners is available to conduct the business of Jackson County. Your Jackson County Commissioners broadcast this meeting over Rogue Valley Television, and it's available for live streaming and review at jacksoncountyor.gov. Under the Government tab, under Recorded Meetings, click on RV TV Live Streaming. The types of business that occur at this meeting include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by departments of the county, and recognition of service that makes our county great. Agendas of the meetings are posted on the Commissioners Bulletin Board and released on the county website and through local media in the time required for public notice. Many of the conclusions on the business presented to the Board of Commissioners have been discussed in detail and prepared by the Administration Office and staff prior to consideration at this meeting and the official vote. These prior discussions also have been properly noticed and the work done in a transparent manner. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings or watch online at jacksoncountyor.gov. And now, your Jackson County Commissioners, Dave Dotterer, Colleen Roberts, and Rick Dyer, working for you.
So it's 9:30, and I'll call to order the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for December 13th, 2023. We're in the courthouse auditorium and also an audio/video conference. And if you would join us and stand for our Pledge of Allegiance, we'll begin. So, thank you, and we're going to begin, before we start the business part of our meeting, with a special presentation. It's the Chairman's Award. We'll meet Darcy Manself right by the auditorium. We'll meet you right down there. We wouldn't make you stand down here by yourself. So, this is called the Chairman's Award for 2023, and just a little history about it. The Presiding Chair of the Board of Commissioners has the honor of selecting a recipient for the annual Chairman's Award. This honor recognizes a local resident or residents whose lifetime achievements have gone above and beyond the usual responsibilities of good citizenship in making a profound difference in people's lives in Jackson County. As a 2023 Chair, I'm honored to present the 13th Annual Chairman's Award to Ms. Darcy Manself for her work in the field of community service. So, Darcy was raised on a 750-acre alfalfa ranch in Malin, Oregon. She attended Lost River High School and then continued her education by attending Southern Oregon State University, Southern Oregon State College, which hasn't been many names, but now SOU, right? Where she received her Bachelor of Science degree in business management. Darcy's career began with her family's business, A Country Corner, located in Malin. Then she went on to work for US Bank in Medford as a loan officer, for Bob Frank Nissan from 1987 to 1989, and for John Hamblin Motors from 1989 to 1991 as an office manager. In 1990, Darcy began her career as a comptroller with Insurance Marketplace, which is now High Street Insurance, where she's been employed for over 32 years. Time flies, doesn't it? Darcy's been a leader in the community with her decades of community service. In 1989, she was only the second woman in the state to be installed as a member of the Lions Club. Over the years, she has earned numerous awards, to name just a few. We've got pages and pages on Darcy. To name a few, she has the Sir Optimus Award for Women Who Make a Difference, the Sir Optimus Award for Advancing the Status of Women, the Community Spirit Award presented by the Chamber of Medford in Jackson County, the Community Loyalty Hero Award presented by Rogue Credit Union, the Guardian Angel Award presented by Hearts with a Mission Youth Shelter, and won third place in Dancing with the Rogue Valley Stars benefiting the Sparrows Club. Today, Darcy continues to display her passion for the community by devoting her time to the Sir Optimus International Rogue Valley Club, the Rustic Relics Antique Tractor Club, Hearts with a Mission Youth Shelter, and Central Point Presbyterian Church, and of course, the Pear Blossom Festival, which I think you're most notably known, I mean to the most of us, which you have been a passionate and influential Board Member for 37 years, and the President for 30 years. During her time as the President of the Pear Blossom Festival, Darcy's been involved in the creation of many activities that support the event and the parade, including but not limited to the Queen Scholarship Pageant and the annual Pedal for a Cause Bike Ride Petals and Pears. And isn't there a junior court, like the five-year-olds? I had a son compete in that once, and that's a whole nother story. That's quite entertaining. Over the decades, with Darcy's exceptional leadership, the Pear Blossom Festival has received multiple recognitions, including the 2014 Mayor's Award, and the 2016 and 17 Southern Oregon Best of the Best Award, and in 2016, received an Oregon Heritage Tradition Designation for being in continuous operation for more than 50 years, demonstrating a public profile and reputation that distinguishes it from more routine events, and adding to the livability and identity of Jackson County and the state as a whole. And you ask, in her spare time, what does Darcy do? Well, in her spare time, she enjoys spending time with her husband, Steve, who's joined us today, too. He's here somewhere. There he is. And their three Rottweilers, working on the family ranch, playing piano, scrapbooking, needlepoint, and is involved with various family and social events. Service to the community is a way of life for Darcy Manself, and as the Chair of the Board of County Commissioners, I'm honored to recognize her with the 2023 Chairman's Award for Outstanding Work in the Field of Community Service.
Well, when I heard that list of awards that you won, it seems like this was the last one to be... So, we finally got to it. We finally completed the list. No, I really like, we have a lot of recognition and awards that we give throughout the year, but this is always my favorite, because we get to hear about the true superstars in our community, and we really get to hear about what they do in depth. And, I mean, I'm sure we could have gone pages more, but that's extremely impressive. I think Commissioner Roberts, you hit this one out of the park. Well, you did it. She just saw you hit it out of the park. But either way, we appreciate what you... You're an inspiration. You're an absolute huge asset to our community, and just congratulations, and thank you for what you do. And before I forget, my sister would be very upset. My sister Cheryl Dyer, and she wanted to be here. She, again, says the same things. You are just a dynamo. You are an inspiration. But the one thing that trumped her being here, she's got a brand-new grandbaby in Reno, so I think we can all understand that, but she wanted to say congratulations as well. So, congratulations and thank you.
I'll simply say that, you know, it's impossible to add to that and everything, but I will just say that, you know, what's really remarkable about our community is we have so many people like you, but you stand out so much, and we just wouldn't be the community we'd be without you. You know, that really, really means a lot to us. It really is great. So, congratulations. Thank you.
And this is kind of a special award, and sometimes you have lots of guests that come, and I would like to open it if anybody would like to say anything. You get the final word. But if anybody wants to say anything about their, how Darcy's affected their lives, or... I know, I always think, when I read her list of accomplishments, I go, "Well, when I get old, I want to be Darcy." But I am old! So, never mind. It's too late. But anyway, if anybody would like to say anything, you're sure welcome to, but you have to come up and use a microphone, so, because it all gets televised. Come on up, Charlotte.
You have to look right up at the camera right there. There's millions of people viewing this.
Darcy and I go back a long ways. I've been her hairdresser for 40 years plus, and I know a lot of secrets, and most of the most amazing things have been the moments she's shared with me, very humbly, about the amazing things that she's done in her life. And as a hairdresser, you just listen, and I just so loved every moment. And I can't, I don't have a friend that I'm more proud of, besides maybe you. We're both Clam the Falls girls, and we've known each other a long time, all of us. But Darcy and I go back a long way. She has a wall in her hallway that indicates all the funny hairdresser styles I've done on her. But anyway, I couldn't be more proud, and we all are. I'm so happy to share this moment with you, because I love you. Congratulations. You deserve it.
Thank you. Anybody else? Get a moment with the woman of the hour here. Oh, yay. Just kind of tell us who you are, and go ahead with your story.
I have secrets, too. No, I'm Kevin Lamson, and I'm the founder of Hearts with a Mission, and Darcy has been just a huge, huge support, not just of the organization, but of the kids. She became our Board Chair a few years back. She organizes every one of our events. In fact, a few years ago, Darcy said, "Do you want me to take on your annual event?" And I said, "Well, yeah." And she said, "There's one condition." And I said, "Well, what's that?" And she says, "You no longer have a say in anything." So, once we got that established, I thought, "Well, great." And I actually was in Chicago one year, didn't get home till 5:30 or 5:00. The event started at 6:00, and when I showed up, everything was perfect. And I thought, "I never have to doubt her again. She's totally capable." But we would not be the organization we are without you. So, I want to just commend you. I love you, and thank you.
Thank you for that. Anybody else? Any takers? Well, I will just say, the plaque that it gets awarded to Darcy said, "The Chairman's Award Presented to Darcy Manself for the Lifetime Achievement as a Citizen of Jackson County in the Field of Community Service." Darcy Manself is hereby acknowledged as Jackson County's esteemed Citizen of the Year for 2023. And you do, as promised, you get to say the final word. So, if you know any other secrets on those other people, it's your time.
So, I'll be quick. My high school speech teacher told me once that the best speech had three things: it's impactful, it's engaging, and it's short. And I told her, "Two out of three isn't bad." But this is an incredible honor today, and I thank you so much for including me on what I know from the past is an incredible list of recipients. So, I'm very honored and very humbled to receive this. I think that everyone here today that knows me knows that I would rather be planning the after-party. I don't do the work or carry on a 71-year tradition for me, but rather the community and for the betterment of the community, and to make others happy, and to bring something to this town. Having a heart to give and volunteer and to be kind and think of others first begins when you're very young, with your family as your center. As you grow and move on, you have mentors and friends that serve as examples of what caring and giving is all about. I was fortunate, when I moved here almost 40 years ago, that I had many people that stepped in to lead and guide me. Over 30 years ago, one of my previous bosses, Bob Frank, who had car dealerships up and down the West Coast, taught me three things that I believe in and follow today: surround yourself with good people, have the right people in the right place doing the right thing, and get your money in the bank. And my husband says, "I always get the money in the bank, I just have a hard time keeping it there." And I told him, "Two out of three isn't bad." As I think of all the friends and fellow volunteers and club members that I have surrounded myself with, many who are here today, these are these good people and the right people, and they're my inspirations to volunteer and to help others and to continue traditions. They're my cheerleaders, and they push me to be active and involved, so I wouldn't be receiving this today if it hadn't started in a good home with all of these good people. So, I share this with them for inspiring me, pushing me, and supporting me, and my husband for putting up with my crazy.
Have you?
So, thank you for this Chairman's Choice, for adding me to a list of amazing people
Because that's me. And then Carol does it. I was going to say, maybe she can help me, but I didn't want to throw that in.
that have done so much for our county. I'm truly honored and humbled to be receiving this.
Well, thank you.
And since my mom taught me to never go anywhere without taking something to give, I had chocolate
I appreciate everybody coming for the award.
bars made by my friend, Deana Branson, and they say, "Stop me before I volunteer again."
Our next item on our agenda, we're going to move on, is the Request for and Discussion
So, for each one of you, I have chocolates. Thank you.
And I will say, Darcy's mom is here, and her brother came also to share this morning of Non-Agenda Items. It's a five-minute limit. Pursuant to the codified ordinances of Jackson County, Section 213.06, members of the public may address any item not on the agenda. of award with you. However, pursuant to ORUS 192.640, the Board of Commissioners is prohibited from discussing So, it does start with family and a supportive husband for us, right? a principal subject that is not on the agenda. Anyway, congratulations, and thank you for being our Chairman's Award. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners will listen to your concerns and may consider the matter you raised by asking staff to follow up on any questions or by placing the matter Well deserved. So, we have to go on with our business meeting, and you're welcome to stay for it, but we on the agenda for discussion at a future meeting. So, we'll start with our in-house sign-up sheet, and anybody online, if you want to don't hold it against you if you slip out, so that's up to you. join in, just raise your Zoom hand feature. We will give you an opportunity as well. But we'll start with Colleen Padilla from Soretti, if you want to come forward. Well, thanks for coming.
Yes, good morning. Thank you, Commissioner Roberts, Daughter Anne Dyer. Just a couple things, Dave. First of all, I love coming to this particular meeting to see all the great community leaders, of which you are all great community leaders. Also, I happen to serve on the Hearts with a Mission Board, so that was particularly wonderful to me as well. I just have two things I wanted to share with you today, since I'm here, and that is just a couple of dates to put on your calendars as reminders. The first one is really about elected leaders, of which we appreciate your leadership. So, last year's Rogue Valley Council of Governments and Soretti began to host a collective event together, hosted by Soretti and RV Cog. It will be at the City of Central Point Council Chambers again. It's just an appreciation mixer, really, for all of our elected officials, some of which will be maybe newly appointed and otherwise, but it's really to give you an opportunity to connect with one another, have some goodies that we bring in, and then maybe receive some information on short presentations from RV Cogs, Soretti, and others for which you may be a liaison. So, it should be fairly informal this year, since it's not election year, but we invite you to that. The date is Monday, January 29th, again, at the City of Central Point Council Chambers. Thanks to City of Central Point for offering that up again at 4:00 to 6:30, roughly, 4:00 to 6:30. And you have received some invitations, and we'll continue to remind you about that. The second date leap year is in 2024. That date is February 29th. It's a Thursday. You have, we're grateful to have you support Soretti over the years and our comprehensive economic development strategy. We have our annual State of the Rogue Valley Breakfast that morning, 8:00 AM to 11:00 AM. It will be at the Rogue Valley Country Club. And we have an economist coming to speak. We have a site selector coming to speak, and a couple of panels. But we'll also have a printed update on how we are doing with our comprehensive economic development strategy, some of the metrics and business stories that we're able to share with you as case studies. So, two dates again, January 29th, February 29th, and that's all I have for you today. Again, thank you for your leadership. Merry Christmas, and we'll be chatting with you again soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Colleen. Merry Christmas. Anybody else in the auditorium? If you haven't signed up, you're still able to come to the podium and speak, or anybody online to raise your Zoom hand? Oh, we have Joyce coming up. Come on up.
Good morning. Joyce Michelangelo, Central Point. I'm here to speak about the thing that's going out, people getting signatures for changing our makeup of our Board of Commissioners. Currently, we have three Commissioners, and you are nonpartisan. And by having three Commissioners only, anytime you have two people together, it counts as a quorum, and so therefore, you're very careful to not be discussing business outside of the work area, and we appreciate that. So, that gives us the transparency that we really need from anybody that is leading our county or our city or our state. Currently, the three of you represent all of Jackson County, and you are trying to represent all of the residents in values, in their principles, and the priorities, and we really appreciate that. By going to five Commissioners, there's the possibility of people working behind the scenes, just two people here, then two people there, and two people here, and you have no idea what kind of plans they're making in the background. It's not transparent anymore, and they have a tendency to support whatever's going on in their life, not necessarily what's good for the entire county. Also, part of this initiative is to have people, or another one of the initiative parts is the nonpartisan elections, that when you file your paperwork to be running as a county commissioner, now, you do not have to state whether you're Republican, unaffiliated, Democrat, Conservative Party, none of that. Now, anyone voting for you doesn't know where you are in real life, what are your values. Your party affiliation typically will give people an indication of what values you have in your life. We want Commissioners. We need to have transparency as to what that person believes in, as well as transparency in their discussions of matters of the county. Also, they're talking about implementing smaller salaries for each of the Commissioners without any discussion about all of the background that goes with being a Commissioner. You have to have an office. You need to have travel. You need to have training. All of those things cost something, and if you cut out the travel, if you cut out the training, then you are now taking away, making a Commissioner a better person representing the county. And so, those charges that are available now are important. They're things for building our county and allowing the persons that are Commissioners to grow in their position. And when we have someone that is complaining about the current salary, when they personally had a vote in increasing salaries many years ago, then that kind of sounds a little bit hinky to most of us. You vote for a salary increase, you're happy enough to take it. When you retire, you're happy enough to use those monies, and you're going to now use those monies that you got to persecute the current people that are doing a wonderful job, that are well-respected in a county where we have people coming to learn how our Commissioners are doing such a good job with the money that they have, the number of departments that you oversee, and those types of things. And so, I believe that we need to stick with the three Commissioners. You guys are doing a fantastic job, and we don't need somebody interfering. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joyce. Anybody else in the auditorium can sure step up, or anybody online, raise your Zoom hand.
Madam Chair, it does look like we have one individual with their Zoom hand raised to speak.
Great. Thank you.
I will go ahead and bring him in now.
So, when you come into the meeting, if you unmute yourself and also give your name and address for the record, the time will be yours.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
No, not you, darling. Stop. Hello, I'm talking to my wife at the same time. My name is Brad Frye, 1054 Queen's Branch Road, Rogue River, Oregon 97537. I actually live in Wymer. I would just like to support Joyce and everything she said, and add one more thing. In the press a couple weeks ago, it was disclosed that the Secretary of State of the State of Oregon has signed a misinformation contract with a British firm to monitor our social media. That concerns me. I don't know if anyone in this county has any input, but I think this is a scary thing. And the misinfo has gone all the way to the Supreme Court. It's wrong, and it's dangerous. The reason they gave or signing the contract was that too many of us were requesting data from our county recorders for use in election analytics. I have been involved in that with a man named Ed Solomon, another man named Jeff O'Donnell, and there's something wrong in the analytics. Then we found out that, in fact, most of the election equipment is in fact connected to FirstNet, which evolved after 9/11. That was the means for responders to help us in an emergency. So, I don't know if any of you are even aware that the Secretary of State has signed that contract. I'm getting a notice that my internet connection is unstable, so I'll get off before I get lost. I thank you all. The award that was given this morning was that all the local high schools all participate in that, and Joyce is always there. I just thank all you Commissioners having our backs, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you're starting to cut out on us. Yeah, certainly.
So, this is for Captain Frye and everyone else. Not only are we aware of the contract signed by the Secretary of State with the AI company that is going to monitor-
analytics. I have been involved in that with a man named Ed Solomon, another man named Jeff O'Donnell. And there's something wrong in the analytics. Then we found out that in fact, most of the election equipment is in fact connected to FirstNet, which evolved after 9/11. That was their means for responders to help us in an emergency. I don't know if any of you are even aware that the Secretary of State has signed that contract. I'm getting a notice that my internet connection is unstable, so I'll get off before I get lost. I thank you all. The award that was given this morning was that all the local high school, all participate in that. And Joyce, always, enter. I just thank all you commissioners having our backs. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, you're starting to cut out on us. Yeah, certainly.
So this is for Captain Frye and everyone else. Not only are we aware of the contract signed by the Secretary of State with the AI company that is going to monitor for what they consider misinformation, disinformation, which makes them the sole arbiter of the truth on this, as well as the First Amendment concerns, this letter was sent to the governor, to the Secretary of State, to legislators. We were, again, as soon as we became aware of it, we were proactive, as we could be, to do whatever we could to stop it because we do see the dangers. I just wanted to make sure that you were aware of that, and anybody listening is also informed of that.
Okay, anybody else in the auditorium or online can still speak? Nobody online either?
Madam Chair, there's no one else with their Zoom hand raised to speak.
Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and move on to the consent calendar. We have minutes of meetings from the Board of Commissioners' work session, November 21st, 2023, and the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for November 22nd, 2023.
I move approval of the consent calendar.
And I'll second.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes. And we have a public hearing today. We have a public hearing and order in the matter of authorizing the county administrator to assign ambulance service area number three, the ASA 3, to Ashland Fire and Rescue, and it's order number 264-23. Mr. Jordan.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you. In this case, as you know, ambulance services in Jackson County are governed by the county's ambulance service plan, and that's Section 7.5 Sub C of the plan. It requires a public hearing be held for the interested persons to voice their views regarding the selection of an ambulance service provider. Board of Commissioners is empowered by the plan to assign an exclusive license to operate ambulances, in this case, ambulance service area three, which covers Ashland, Talon, Colstein, Pinehurst, and Mount Ashland. The application process did follow the procedures prescribed in Section 1075.07, provider selection and boundary changes of the codified ordinances of Jackson County. The board did review the information submitted by the applicant, the staff report, and all other provided information at year November 14, 2023 Board of Commissioners' work session. Notice of the December 13, 2023 public hearing was published in the November 29, 2023 edition of the Rogue River Press, and November 30, 2023 edition of the Rogue Valley Times. Notice of the assignment expiration and application deadlines were also published in accordance with prescribed timelines. The only application received was from Ashland Fire and Rescue. Ashland Fire and Rescue is the current ambulance service provider for ambulance service area three, and its current assignment expires on December 31 of 2023. Ashland Fire and Rescue has consistently met or exceeded planned requirements, and the submitted application demonstrates that they have the ability to continue to meet or exceed planned requirements for the next five years. In this case, if approved by the board, the term of the assignment is January 1, 2024 through December 31 of 2028.
Great. Thank you. Before we open the public hearing, we do have rules, and the county council read those.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Pursuant to Section 213.07 of the Jackson County Codified Ordinance, the rules for the conduct of the public hearing are as follows. Only the chairperson or member of the Board of County Commissioners may question a speaker. There will be no interruption of a speaker from the audience, no debates on the floor. Applause is not permitted. A speaker may criticize a proposal, the board ordinance of the county, but the speaker shall not argue with another speaker directly. Any speaker may present an opposite view, but not in personal terms. A person wishing to speak shall raise his or her hand and be recognized by the chairperson conducting the hearing or sign in. After being recognized, the speaker shall first state his or her name and address before proceeding with his or her statement. The chairperson may limit the duration of any presentation to the time necessary to cover factual information. Repetition by speaker shall be avoided. Whoever violates any such rules shall first be warned by the chairperson, desist from such violation. In the event that such person does not so desist, he or she may be ordered by the chairperson to leave the hearing. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. So with that, we will open the public hearing. And I don't have a sign-in sheet, but you're welcome to speak to this if anybody came to do that, or if anybody online that would like to speak on this issue. We have Ashland here in full force with the mayor and administrator and our Fire and Rescue. Thanks for coming. So nobody is stepping forward, and nobody has their Zoom hand raised, so we'll close the public hearing and open it up for a motion and discussion of the board.
I will move to approve order number 264-23.
Second.
Any discussion?
No.
Okay. We discussed it, and we had a presentation. It was very good.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes. Okay, well, so we'll move on to discussion deliberation. We have an order authorizing a Jackson County contract for services with Rams Specialized Security Service Incorporated, order number 265-23. Mr. Jordan.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Members of the board, the United States Department of Homeland Security, Transportation Security Administration requires armed security at the Rogue Valley International Medford Airport. We did do a request for proposals, which was published in the Daily Journal of Commerce and the Rogue River Press. It was also posted to the Oregon Procurement Information Network, or ORPEN, website, and also the Jackson County website. We did receive two proposals. Rams Specialized Security Service Incorporated bid $1,434,100, and Providers International Incorporated bid $1,621,476. A selection committee reviewed each of the proposals using factors such as experience, also accreditation, operating efficiency, technical understanding, and cost to determine the best value. It was determined by the selection committee that Rams Specialized Security Service Incorporated should be awarded the contract. Term of the contract's January 21, or January 1 of 2024 through December 31 of 2026, with the option to extend for two additional one-year terms. The $1,434,100 is a not-to-exceed amount for the initial three-year term of the contract, and two additional optional one-year terms. And I do recommend your approval.
Thank you. Any interesting questions? I'll take a motion.
No questions. I move approval of order number 265-23.
And I'll second.
Okay. Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes. Next item is an order authorizing a Jackson County services contract with Addictions Recovery Center Incorporated. It's order number 266-23. Mr. Jordan.
Thanks, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Addictions Recovery Center Incorporated, we often refer to them as ARC, is providing evidence-based programming to both medium and high-risk justice-involved individuals with the Recovery Opportunity Court, or the ROK program. Funding for these services is provided through the state of Oregon by the Criminal Justice Commission Specialty Courts program. The ROK program, as you know, was specifically designed for adult justice-involved individuals with substance abuse barriers. Primary goal of the program is to reduce recidivism, also to decrease prison utilization, reduce substance abuse, increase long-term recovery, and increase accountability. The ARC will continue to work collaboratively with the ROK staff to provide the services necessary to meet these goals. In this case, the term of the contract's July 1 of 2023 through June 30 of 2025, and it will require ratification to become effective July 1 of 2023. It's an expense for the term of the contract of $230,559, and I do recommend your approval.
Thank you.
I'll move approval of order number 266-23.
Second.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes. Surprised we have a comment on that one. That's a good program, anyway. Move on. Order authorizing intergovernmental agreement number 182067 with the State of Oregon, Oregon Health Authority. It's order number 267-23. Mr. Jordan.
And Madam Chair, members of the board, in this case, the state of Oregon through the Oregon Health Authority provides what's called enrollment assistance and network navigation, provided to Oregonians of all income levels who might benefit from aid through the Oregon Health Plan. Many of the people we supervise or who otherwise justice-involved with various county departments are individuals who are on or who would qualify for Oregon Health Plan. This agreement will allow Jackson County Community Justice Department to utilize Oregon Health Authority resources to train employees as certified Oregon Health Plan application assisters. That's meant to help our justice-involved individuals with enrolling or re-engaging in those Oregon Health Plan services. Term of the agreement is upon execution through December 31 of 2027. There is no financial impact. We just have to have an agreement in place to allow our staff to become trained.
Great, thank you.
I do recommend your approval.
I will move approval of order number 267-23.
And I'll second.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes. And we have the first reading and scheduling of a second reading, a public hearing of an ordinance amending Chapter 246, officers and employees generally of the codified ordinances of Jackson County, Oregon. It's order number 2023-7. Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, Madam Chair, since this involves an amendment of our codified ordinance, it's going to be a lengthy explanation. It's accomplishing kind of one major change. But on June 11, as you know, of 2021, Governor Kate Brown signed Oregon House Bill 2168. It amended the provisions of Oregon Revised Statute 187.010 to add June 19, known as Juneteenth, to the list of legal holidays in the state of Oregon. On June 17 of 2021, President Joe Biden signed S. 475 in the 117th Congress, adopting Public Law 117-17 for the purpose of amending the United States Code to add June 19, known as Juneteenth, to the list of legal public holidays for employees of the United States. On May 4, 2022, the Board of Commissioners ordered Juneteenth to be added as an official holiday for Jackson County employees. In bargaining negotiations between the Jackson County Sheriff's Employees Association and Jackson County, both parties agreed to add an additional floating holiday for Jackson County Sheriff's Employees Association. Represented employees in recognition of Juneteenth, previously, both the union represented employees and the sheriff's office management employees were credited with 12 floating holidays each fiscal year. Now, the union represented employees will be credited for 13 floating holidays each year. The ordinance would codify a 13th floating holiday for the sheriff's office management employees to mirror the floating holidays credited to the union employees. Adoption of this ordinance will add an additional holiday for the sheriff's office management employees, which will add an additional eight hours of annual floating holiday time to the employee's annual accrual. In accordance with county policy, any remaining floating holiday pay at the end of the fiscal year shall be paid at the employee's regular straight time rate in effect on that date. As such, this will add eight hours of pay at the end of the fiscal year for employees who do not use the floating holiday within a fiscal year. Additionally, the additional floating holiday pay will be eligible for vacation accrual and buyout in accordance with already existing county policy. It's recommended that the first reading of the ordinance be held today, December 13, 2023, and that the second reading and public hearing be scheduled for Wednesday, December 27, 2023, at 9:30 a.m. here in the courthouse auditorium, and also by audio video conference. If adopted on December 27, 2023, the ordinance will become effective February 26 of 2024. Financial impact of the addition is unknown, as there's no data on whether subject employees will actually use the floating holiday time within a fiscal year or choose to receive payment for the time as allowed by county policy 5-46A. And that's my explanation, unless you have. Essentially, Madam Chair, to summarize that, is the Board of Commissioners already authorized all of their employees, except for the sheriff's department employees and sheriff's management, to receive this additional holiday through the collective bargaining process. The county, through the Board of Commissioners, did agree to add it as a holiday, and so we're adding it, cleaning up our ordinance to effect what the board already authorized.
Thank you. And this is just the first reading, and we need to schedule the second. So I'll take that motion.
I will move to approve the first reading and schedule the second reading for December 27, 2023, at 9:30 a.m. in the courthouse auditorium and by audio video conference.
And public hearing.
Did not say that. Oh, sorry. And public hearing. We'll do that, too.
Second.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes. And then we have an order initiating a major text amendment to the Jackson County Land Development Ordinance regarding accessory dwelling units in residential zones, and it's order number 268-23. Mr. Jordan.
Yeah, Madam Chair, members of the board, I know you know a lot about this because we've talked about it many times over the years since 2017. You also got a very thorough update on the purpose of initiating this text amendment in a prior work session. But essentially, in response to Oregon's housing shortage, there were several laws passed since 2017 to allow an owner of a parcel within a residential zone to construct one accessory dwelling unit, or commonly referred to as an ADU, subject to certain restrictions and limitations. Based on these new laws, there are allowances for ADUs on residentially-zoned lands, both inside and outside of the urban growth boundary. The Jackson County Land Development Ordinance needs to be amended to reflect these changes.
Great, thank you.
I will move approval of order number 268-23.
And I'll second.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes. We'll see how that process unfolds. And then we've got a second page today. We have order authorizing a mineral material free use permit with the United States Department of the Interior Bureau of Land Management. It's order number 269-23. Mr. Jordan.
Just when you say "free," and you mentioned the United States government, it just kind of...
Free?
A little bit of a shocker.
Free use?
Oxymoron.
Jackson County, as you know, currently utilizes the Reese Creek Quarry on an as-needed basis. This is for road projects. Current permit did expire, and categorical exclusion review was needed before we could renew that permit. The new permit now will allow Jackson County to continue removing rock from Reese Creek Quarry for an additional 10 years. Term of the permit is upon final signature through November 11 of 2033. There's no direct financial impact, although we're utilizing the quarry for free, so I do recommend your approval.
I will move approval of order number 269-23.
Second.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes. The price is right, right?
Can't beat it.
And our final item is order authorizing a purchase order under Oregon State Contract with Butler Ford. It's order 270-23. Mr. Jordan.
Madam Chair, members of the board, first of all, let me just say you know how hard it's been for us to be able to get vehicles. It's kind of amazing. In this case, Jackson County Motor Pool, through our Roads and Parks Department, has been working on behalf of our Jackson County Sheriff's Office to purchase 12 sport utility vehicles to replace multiple units for fiscal year '23-'24. As you'll recall, in September of 2023, an order was placed for 12 Chevrolet Tahoe police units, which the board approved at that time. We got notification back that Chevrolet will not be able to provide all 12 of those vehicles and only be able to allocate five to our county. Motor Pool, as an alternative, is selecting the Ford F-150 police responder pickup trucks to fill five of those remaining seven slots that were unable to secure through the original purchase order. Under the State of Oregon Solicitation Number DAS PS-2295-20, and also a specific price agreement number 1657, Butler Ford has offered to sell the county five Ford F-150 police responder pickup trucks with pricing that will include all taxes, department of motor vehicle registrations, and delivery fees. Automobile manufacturers are now requesting that we provide a purchase order prior to allowing a dealer to even place an order for the purchase of vehicles, mostly because they're in high demand and they don't need to wait for our money anymore. They have people that are willing to pay them right now. In this case, the purchase order for these vehicles will be in the amount of $242,270 for five Ford F-150 police responder pickup trucks. And I'll just remind the board that that's only the cost of acquiring the trucks, not the cost of outfitting the trucks. There will be additional costs to outfit them as police vehicles, and I do recommend your approval.
I will move approval of order number 270-23.
I'll second.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes. That does conclude our agenda for this weekend. Our meeting is adjourned.
We are going to have a stack to sign, aren't we?
We hope that you have enjoyed this week's Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting. If you have any questions on any part of the show, please feel free to contact your Jackson County commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information at jacksoncountyor.gov. To review the content of this or any other recent meeting, under the Government tab, under Recorded Meetings, click on RV TV Live Streaming.